Yes. We can start with the pledge.
Sure.
I'm not going to stay in because of my leg. Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which is. One nation. Under God. Indivisible.
Visible.
With liberty. Justice for all.
Amen. Ron, would you say the prayer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we seek your guidance tonight as we discuss the business of our community and our schools and our students and staff. And we just pray for your guidance in all that we do, every decision that we make, we seek your blessing. Thank you for your love and watching over us in Jesus's name. Amen.
Yes, review the roll call now? Well, I didn't, sorry, I didn't have the start time for the meeting. Somebody have the time handy?
Seven thirty-eight.
Thank you, Jill. Troy Fields here. Dwayne Long. Jared Teeman.
Yep.
Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Here.
Ron Childress. Matt Roberts.
Here.
Jill Martin.
Here.
Eric Kirkendall.
He may be muted.
He's here. I can see him.
He's here?
Yeah.
Roy Bruce.
Here.
Patrick Alt.
Yes, sir.
Sandy YoHo.
Here.
Sharon Apps.
She's here.
Okay. And Trent Provo.
I'm here.
And Patty from the Daily World.
She doesn't work there.
No longer with us. It's Terry Davis.
Oh, okay. Terry Davis with us.
Hang on. Might be. I can't tell.
Okay. So we start with. Agenda and the minutes recommended. So I guess we'll start with, you can start with the participation, sorry.
Comments, yep. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express concerns regarding agenda items. Comments will be limited to board meeting agenda items with a time limit of three to five minutes. So if there is anyone who has.
Keisha Blaze is the first to ask to talk.
Yep.
Okay. Hey, guys. Good evening, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name is Keisha Blaze. I've been a teacher at Eastern Green Elementary for eighteen years and am also a community member. I'm currently the K through two special ed inclusion teacher. I would like to talk to you guys a little bit tonight on behalf of the elementary school principal hiring committee. The teachers on this hiring team included myself, Kim Hill, Mandy Buskirk, Michelle Vincent, Haley Murray, and one of our secretaries, Beth Decker. Mr. Alt was also a part of this team along with Mr. Provo. I would like to highlight some of the points from the letter of recommendation from our interview committee that was the school board members. Hiring a new person to lead the elementary was not easy. In April, we began the task of finding a new principal to take the place of our beloved Sharon App. Nineteen candidates applied with various administrative experience. The hiring committee spent countless hours on this process analyzing resumes, reference letters, and qualifications, followed by Zoom discussions and three days of virtual interviews. This thorough process provided us with the right person for our elementary. That person is Amanda Gibbony. I'm really excited for everybody gets to get to know her and meet her. Mrs. Gibbony's accomplishments, experiences, references, and interview discussions packed all the boxes of what we felt like we needed in a school leader and great agent of pain for our elementary school. I'd also like to highlight some of her accomplishments. She has administration experience along with past teaching experience. She was a student service coordinator implementing social emotional curriculum and has experience in special education, inclusion, positive behavioral interventions and supports. She developed STEM curriculum, was a high ability coordinator. She has experience as an instructional coach and curriculum development. She has experience in test and data coordination and has developed school-wide improvements. She also has many successful grant writing experiences, including a comprehensive Lilly Endowment Grant. Mrs. Gibbony also displays some personal traits that we feel would make her a great fit for our Thunderbird team. Amanda has a belief in a whole child approach and wants to build genuine relationships with students, staff, and families. She wants to inspire, collaborate, and empower others to do their best and believes communication is vital and an integral part of being a good leader. Amanda wants to be a visible presence throughout the school building during the day, after school, and during community events. Lastly, she stated more than once that she wanted to be a part of a school family and our Eastern Green School family. It's heartbreaking for us to think about Mrs. Apps not being here next year. She has been an amazing mentor, friend, teacher, leader, and a role model for all of us. She will be truly missed by many and leaves big shoes to fill. But we sincerely believe Mrs. Gibbony is the right person to lead Eastern Green Elementary School. During these uncertain times, we need a caring, enthusiastic person to help our school, our families, and our students to continue to grow. Mrs. Gibbony is that person, not only because she's highly qualified, but she also is dedicated for what is best for kids. And that's so important. We are confident that Mrs. Gibbony would be able to meet all of our elementary's administrative needs. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen. I'm speaking on behalf of our interview team. I'm excited for the future of our elementary. Again, we're going to miss Mrs. Apps dearly. Got a little choked up talking about it. But we wish her the best in her retirement and are very excited for her next steps. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Keisha.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If so, just type into the chat bar and Scott will be able to see that and unmute you. So give another minute here. So if you want to speak, just type into the chat bar.
No others.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on. So Troy, if you want to go ahead with the adoption of the agenda.
Hey, it is recommended that the agenda for May twentieth, two thousand twenty meeting be approved as presented with additions, corrections, and deletions as recommended by the board. I have a motion for that.
Destroyed.
Dwayne Long. And a second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman. And I guess we'll just go through the thing here. Mike Adams.
Yeah, yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Who?
Troy Fields. Yes, Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh. Approval of the minutes is recommended that the minutes from the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty meeting be approved as presented. Do you have a motion for that?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long, second.
Yep. Yes, Troy.
That Matt?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Matt Roberts. And Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh. It is recommended that the claims numbers one, two, three, three, one through.
One, two, four, zero, zero.
Be approved as presented. Do you have a motion for that?
Yes, I got it.
Mike. Second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Okay, Mike Adams, Scott Carmichael.
Yay.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh. This. Personnel report, going back to you, Trent.
Yes, thank you. Personnel, we'll start with resignations. We have a few of those. First off, we have Shelby Britton is resigning as ag teacher and FFA advisor effective July thirty-first. I believe she had the opportunity to go into the private sector, so wish her best of luck in her new job. We're just going to do those one at a time or?
I didn't know. Within the personnel report, do you want to do them all together? How you want to do it, I don't care.
I'm fine with doing them all together as long as you guys are.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And then Leah Leibacher is resigning her student council advisor position effective at the conclusion of the nineteen twenty school year. Thank her for her help with that over the years. Julie Adams resigning first grade teaching position effective at the conclusion of the nineteen twenty school year. Thank her for her wonderful years of service. We're going to miss her. Believe she's going to stay home with her little one, so it's always nice when people can do that, so thank her for that. Fontaine Landgrave resigning her special education preschool specialist position effective in the nineteen twenty school year. Want to thank her for her service to Eastern Green. And Katie Flutterman resigning her high school science teacher position effective at the conclusion of the nineteen twenty school year. And once again, thanking her for her years of service. That's the resignations.
Okay.
Go ahead and do the staff recommendations. I've just included all that together unless you want to vote on them separately.
No, it'd be easier for the report for the minutes to be all together.
Okay.
Okay. Staff recommendations, we have Amanda Gibbony being recommended as the principal of Eastern Green Elementary for a two-year contract through the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. I'm going to skip down one. You, Kelly Provo being recommended as the elementary library facilitator position beginning the twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. I'm going to recommend that we are going to table Mr. Alt and Mr. Kirkendall's agenda items there only because we have a question about the cycle that they are on. So I want everybody to understand this is not any issue whatsoever with any of these gentlemen. They're doing a fine job. A question came up, it's kind of a legality. We need to talk to a lawyer about the way they renew. So we're going to look at that and hopefully we're going to get this accomplished next month. But I did want everybody to know that there is no issue. It's just we want to make sure we're doing everything by the book. So those are my personnel recommendations.
Okay, do we have a motion for the personnel report?
I'm motion. I do.
Scott Carmichael, right?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
I'll second. Fifteen minutes trying to talk to a one-year-old.
Okay. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you, everyone. I do really quickly, Amanda Gibbony is here with us. I would like her to kind of say hi, so people, if you can see her, can put a name with a face, so Amanda. There you are. You're unmuted. You want to go ahead and wave and say hi and just introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, hi, everyone. I just want to thank, well, thank you, Keisha, for the kind words. I got a little choked up there. And I just want to thank all of you. I am so honored and I feel so blessed to be part of the Thunderbird team. So I am excited to join the team and I'm excited for all of the great things that we're going to do in the coming years. So thank you so much. I can't wait to meet everyone in person.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, Troy, you want me to keep on going here?
Sure, go ahead, Trent.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have some different contracts and things like that. We have the Bloomington Pediatric Therapy. I'm recommending we approve the contract with them for speech and pathology service for the twenty twenty-one school year. That's who we can contract all of our speech and hearing services for our special needs students that need those services. So they do a good job for us, so I would recommend we continue that service.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
Jared Teeman. Second.
I'll second.
Mike Adams. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. The next one I'm going to recommend, this is Lancer and BB. They're an architectural firm out of Indianapolis. I've worked with them before. I'm going to recommend we table this one for now. Originally, what I was going to recommend is for them to come and do a very comprehensive building study focused a lot on the elementary and the middle school, but they were going to actually check all of our facilities. Just to give us an idea of what we're looking at for future needs. What do our facilities need as far as upgrades, improvements, and things like that? Under the uncertain times we have right now, I think it'd be best to wait on that and we could possibly pick that up in the future if needed. So I would recommend we go ahead and table that for now.
Do you have a motion for that?
I'm not.
Is that Dwayne Long?
Yes.
Second.
I'll second.
Yes.
Jared Teeman. Okay, Mike Adams.
Yes, yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have Chartwell's School Dining. That's obviously who we contract to do all of our food service. We, every year, we have to do a renewal letter. There are different steps we have to take to renew with them. So I'm recommending that we approve the renewal letter that I gave to the board. And then we move on from there with the process through the state to get them renewed. So right now, we're just renewing the renewal letter.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
Matt Roberts. Second.
Yeah.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams.
Yes, yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have a contract with Go Solutions Group. This is a company that we use to help bill Medicaid for services provided to special needs students. They charge a pretty minimal fee. They charge us by our special needs population, but then they charge us per case. We have them handle very reasonable, especially for the money we get back from Medicaid. So I would like to continue going with that company.
Okay, do we have a motion for?
Yes.
Mike Adams. Jared, was that you for a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams. Yes.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
And Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next up, we have a recommendation for an extension of five stars contract with Eastern Green. Five Star is the company that we use to provide a lot of our technology services. I think what I'm going to do is recommend that we table that for now. I've been working with Eric Mosier. Eric might be out there in the, in the community right now listening. I'm going to work with Eric a little bit more on some questions that we have that have been brought up that we would like to just get some answers to. And I know Eric will be very willing to answer those, so we're going to table that for now. I'm going to work with Eric on some things and then hopefully we'll come back in June and get something established. So I'm going to recommend tabling that for now.
Okay. Motion to table five star.
I'm motion.
Dwayne Long. And second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman.
Who was the motion?
Dwayne.
Dwayne.
Thanks.
Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Next up, we have a recommendation to approve the athletic training services contract with Green County Hospital for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. This is a change for us. In the past, we went through IU Health. IU Health contacted Mr. Buskirk and said that they were having a difficult time finding a trainer that was going to be able to service Eastern Green. They kept looking, couldn't find anybody. Well, in the meantime, they actually told us, check with Green County Hospital, and they actually kind of contacted us too. We are very happy with what we've seen in their contract. We believe we're actually going to get more services with them, more access to a trainer than we were getting before for pretty much the same price. Plus, I think we're going to save some money on supplies and things like that because they're going to supply a bunch of their own things. So I'm recommending we go to Green County General Hospital for our training needs.
Anybody have a motion for that?
I'm motion.
Jared Teeman. Second.
Yes, Troy.
Yes.
Dwayne Long. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation for the AE Voice Company, which is basically Computrol. We're recommending a one-year renewal of Computrol. This is the accounting software that the central office uses. And our ECA treasurer uses this also for all of our treasurer's duties. So I'm recommending a one-year renewal of Computrol.
Do you have a motion for that?
I'll motion.
Matt Roberts, second.
Yeah.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Next up is something that I've talked with the board about here several times. We were approached by Justin and Jennifer Smith. They live in Hendrixville. There's a little history that goes behind this. The Eastern Green still owns approximately two acres of land down a little lane surrounded by three or four houses. So it's kind of a landlocked piece of land that Eastern Green still owns. It goes back to the one-room schoolhouse era, so it's, it goes back a long way. So they approached, they actually approached Mr. Beck told when he was still superintendent about buying it. And with his retirement, it kind of just stopped at that point. They came to me shortly after I got started, I think it was in December. And they want to buy that property because it butts up to their property and it makes perfect sense. They were already talking to Mr. Beck told about buying it for two thousand five hundred dollars. I think that's a fair price for the type of land it is. And they will be responsible for all expenses that goes along with that sale. So I'm recommending that we go ahead and approve the sale of that land to Justin and Jennifer Smith.
Okay, do you have a motion for that?
Yeah.
Jared Teeman, second.
Yeah.
Matt Roberts. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. The next recommendation I'm making is a motion to approve the creation and advertisement for the position of Eastern Green Special Education Director. Here sometime in the near future, we're going to need that position. We're still trying to finalize when that's going to be. I'll get to that here in a little bit later in late items. But we at least want to create this position so that we can hire for that in the near future because we're going to need that position, somebody to help take care of our special education when we are no longer part of the joint services co-op. So I would like to go ahead and recommend we create that position.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Scott Carmichael, second.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jared, Jared Teeman. Matt, or sorry, Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
And Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Do you want me to go ahead and read donations, Troy?
That'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. So we have several donations. We're going to recommend to approve a donation from Northwest Bank for an enclosed cargo trailer to Eastern Green Schools. They called me out of the blue and wanted to donate it. We've used it before. I know the band has used it, but they wanted to donate it to us. We'll be able to put our own branding on it, so that's a very wonderful donation that they are making. We thank Northwest Bank for that. Going to recommend to approve a donation. Um, gonna recommend to approve a donation from Westgate Medical. For $98 to Eastern Green High School to go toward JAG. A donation will be used for JAG to purchase graduation cords for their 2020 graduates. That, thank you very much for that. Uh, recommending to approve a donation from Ivy Tech Community College in the amount. Of $250 to Eastern Green High School Athletics. Funds are to go toward a sponsorship for a wrestling program. Recommending to approve a donation from the Green County Foundation in the amount of $1,000. For the Eastern Green Middle School to help fund the eighth and ninth grade class trip to Washington DC in June 2021. Correction, I'm there. It says 2020. It'll probably be 2021 since they're not going this summer. So those are the donations.
Uh, motion to approve the donate?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Uh, second.
Yes.
Matt Roberts. Uh, Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yeah.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Okay. Ready for late items. We have quite a few late items.
Okay.
We have a mo- a recommendation to approve. Emily Black for the social studies position at the high school.
Uh, do we have a motion?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long, second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman. Uh, Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
And Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve Cassandra Layman for the agriculture teacher position at the high school.
Do we have a motion for that teacher?
I'm motion.
Jared Teeman. Second.
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Uh, have a mo- a rec- recommendation to approve the resignation of Karen Weiss effective at the end of the 1920 school year. Thank, I wanna thank her for her service.
Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Matt Roberts. Second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
The next one on here, I'm gonna recommend that we table. That's the resolution to terminate the contract with joint services on. Well, it actually wasn't to terminate the contract. It was to. Waive the one-year notification. It was looking like we were going to. Dissolve joint services. Um, earlier than than the one-year. The one-year notification that that North Lawrence would have to give as being the LEA. That has been a very. Let's be very honest, it's been very frustrating over the past six months trying to get this resolved. Um, we will get it done. I think Eastern Green is gonna come out just fine. In this situation. Um, in a lot of ways, I think we're gonna come out better. We have more week, more meetings coming up next week. We hope to have something resolved next week. I'm not gonna promise anything because I thought we've had things resolved before and it's went the other direction. But, um. I'm gonna let everybody know kind of where things are going as as quickly as I can, but we we need to table that for right now because. That's not where we're exactly at at this point. So I'm recommending tabling that, please.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
I'm.
Dwayne, or, uh, Jared Teeman. And the second.
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation to for the board to approve that our graduation. Ceremony date will be July 26, 2020 at 1:00 PM. The plan will be for us to have a couple plans ready to go. Obviously, it depends on where we are at. With the governor's plan, hopefully it keeps moving along like it is, but if for some reason we have to take steps back, we're gonna have to follow what other whatever guidelines he has us under. So we're gonna be proactive and have a couple plans ready to go. Depending on what social distancing is at the time. And we will get those plans out. As soon as as possible. They're they're being worked on. They're pretty close to being ready for us to put them out there, but not quite, but we'll get them out soon. So that's my recommendation.
Do we have a motion?
I'm motion.
Jared Teeman. Second.
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Uh, Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh, and hopefully this will all work out.
I hope so. Thank you. Uh, next, we have recommendation to approve Ms. Allison Van Cooten as the new science teacher at the high school effective. The 2020, 2021 school year.
Just one second. Sorry.
That's all right. Do you have the newest ones, Troy?
I.
I emailed them all out today.
Yes, I have them mixed up. Sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
Got the, did you just, was it the graduation ceremony, the next one?
We just did the graduation ceremony. The next one I just did was to approve Allison Van Cooten as the new science teacher.
Okay, sorry, I just got them mixed up. Thanks. Uh, motion to approve. Allison.
Yes.
Dwayne Long and who's the second?
Me.
Mike Adams. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Fields, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next up, um. Recommending that the board approve for high school prom to be held on July 24th. Um, we don't have a time listed there yet. We will get that out. Do just want to say just a couple words about that. We we greatly hope we'll it will, just like graduation, we'll be able to hold that. But we'll just have to, uh, that will depend on where we are at with the the governor's plan once again. I do just wanna caution parents, just, you know, be careful. I know some of the girls may have already had their dresses. Purchased before we ever closed. That's wonderful. But just be cautious with. How far you go and how much you're gonna spend because unfortunately. It could get canceled within a week or two before we're supposed to have it, depending on where we're at. And I don't want parents to to go to. All the financial burden and then we have to to cancel. So just wanna, you know. Help parents not not spend money that that might not get used in the future. So just be careful, please. That's all I'm gonna say.
Uh, motion to approve the prom?
I'm motion.
Jared Teeman. Second.
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have a recommendation to prove, uh, Mr. Jim Dwyer for the fifth grade maternity leave position at the middle school affected the start of the 2020, 2021 school year.
Okay, do we have a motion for that?
Yes.
Matt Roberts. Second.
I'll second.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Uh, we have a recommendation to approve the resignation of David Hall as a teaching assistant at the middle school. Effective the end of the 1920 school year.
Okay, do we have a re- recommendate or a motion for that?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. And a second.
I'll second.
Mike Adams. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation to approve the donation of $1,000 from UDWI Community Fund. For the eighth and ninth grade trip to Washington DC in June 2021.
Have a motion?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long. Second.
I'll second.
Matt Roberts. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. I believe that is all the late items. Next up. Looks like we have discussion and information items. Uh, Troy, I hope you'd ask the principals if they have anything?
Sure.
Okay. I see Mr. Alt first. You're in you're in my first page, so I'll go to you. Do you have anything to to discuss, Mr. Alt?
Just congratulations to Amanda Gibbini and Jim Dwyer. Thank you.
I think Mr. Kirkendall does not have a working mic, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I can say on behalf of Mr. Kirkendall, um, he and I have spent a lot of time on the phone. About the past week or two, um, working through a lot of different things like we've just talked about graduation. Prom, still working on some other things for our, not only our seniors, but also. Underclassmen also. So we've got, um. Some more decisions to make on things we might still be able to do and and, uh, we're gonna get information out to everybody as soon as we can. Things are just kind of up in the air right now. We're gonna do what we can. Um, also wanna say thank you to Mr. Kirkendall for all the hiring he had to do here. Of late, had several resignations and he jumped on it, had some good candidates and wanted to snatch them up quickly, so he did that. So. I think that's that's it that I can remember from the high school so far. Uh, Mrs. Apps, are you out there?
Yeah, I am. And, uh, same as Patrick, I want to welcome Amanda. I am so delighted that you're going to be the new principal. Um, I met her briefly and instantly like her. And she's gonna be a wonderful, wonderful addition. And just wanted to also thank the interview team for the amount of hours and heart they put into it. I really appreciate them. Real proud of that group of people. Um, also wanted to just say one more time my appreciation for all the teachers, the parents and students who handled. These this late crazy last month and a half of trying to cludge together e-learning. In ways that we never knew we were gonna do. So once again, um, everybody jumped in and did a fabulous job and I just wanna thank them, um, everybody for the work they did. Um, informational, our report cards are gonna be mailed tomorrow, so if if any of you have questions about those report cards, they are going out, as well as kindergarten diplomas, they will be going out in the mail tomorrow also. And classrooms are gonna be closed by Friday, so day after tomorrow. And so, um, our elementary belongings, all the student belongings are gonna be made available to any all parents to come pick those up next Wednesday. They'll be in the new cafeteria and we'll have them open from eight until six. For parents to pick those up from the new cafeteria. So they can just enter from the, um, upper parking lot straight into the new cafeteria. And our belongings had to be done a little later because ours are teacher intensive. They had to go through all the desks and do all their own bagging, um, and get those together for family. So they will be ready out there on next Wednesday. And another thing to brag about is, uh, we, since we couldn't do our AR awards program, um, I wanted to brag on our two top readers. Having Bristol Brown and Tyler Gopsey had, Tyler had almost a thousand and. Bristol had over 1,000 AR points. That's a dreadful amount of reading. So I wanted to brag on those kids. And and then the last, I would like to just say one more time to all the people who are gonna be leaving to Fonkane Landgreve. And Ally Jankowski, Amanda Klaus. Klaus, Julie Adams, and then Susan Dare, who's been with us for years and years. Thank you guys all for the work you've done. So. Thank you. And thanks again to Keisha for the wonderful introduction to Amanda that she got me choked up too. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sharon. Um, a couple more things I will address. Um, I know there's been some questions about. Things that would normally happen at the high school this time of year or earlier if it were a normal situation. Obviously, this is not a normal situation. Things like. Awards program, academic awards, athletic letters, things like that. Mr. Kirkendall and I have been in conversation about those very things. Uh, Mr. Buskirk has been in contact with me about the athletic side of things. Uh, we are working on those diligently. Uh, we believe that we will be able to do, um, some sort of academic award, uh, program. Uh, still working on what that would look like. Athletic letters, Mr. Buskirk is working on recommendation for what that will look like. So we're trying to do everything that we can to provide. Those wonderful experiences for our seniors and underclassmen. So we're continuing to work on those. So we're continuing to work on those and we are going to get information out to everyone as soon as possible, as soon as we have a, a plan ready. We've just had to work on things kind of one thing at a time because it's so so busy right now with everything we have to follow. So more information coming and we'll get it out as soon as possible. And I want to say one more time to, to Mrs. Apps and all of our retirees. Thank you so much for your, your time at Eastern. Sharon, like I've said before, only known you since November, but it feels like we've been working together for years because we just clicked. And, and I've clicked with the other administrators too and make a good team. Sad to, to lose you, but very excited to have Amanda on board too. And I don't think we'll, we'll miss a step. So thank you very much. That's all I have for discussion unless board members have anything.
Hey, Mike Adams, do you have anything?
Yeah, good. Trent, could you elaborate a little bit about, for the people viewing in, about the yearbook?
Oh, yes, thank you. That's one thing I forgot. Same thing with the yearbook. The yearbook sponsor is looking at options for what she might be able to do. We can't promise anything at this time. She's looking at the possibility of a, a soft cover memory book. But it was very, it was very difficult. She tried everything she could to keep working on it during this time and it just, it, it really wasn't working out. So we're going to try to do everything we can to have something for the seniors. At, at the minimum, they will have something. It'll just come later. But yeah, we're working on something for seniors to make sure they have some form of yearbook one way or another.
Scott Carmichael, do you have anything?
Nope.
Ron Childress, do you have anything?
Just thank again the hiring committee for Mrs. Gibbony. Welcome. And Sharon, I'll cry about you next month.
Troy Fields, I'd just like to say, Sharon, I've worked with you a long time and hope you enjoy your retirement and good luck to everybody that's retiring and move on to Dwayne Long.
Good, Troy.
Jared Teeman.
His microphone.
Jared, did you have anything?
I don't think so. He's muted.
Okay, Matt, do you have anything?
Yes. I think I can probably speak for the entire community in wishing Ms. Debbie Babcock a speedy recovery from her recent medical issues. Look forward to seeing her back in the building.
Okay. Before we, I just want to say if everybody could get with Matt on the, I'm sorry, get with Trent on the meeting for next Wednesday. Appreciate it. Let him know so I could advertise it. And besides that, I just, I guess we're ready for an adjournment.
One other, one other quick thing, Troy.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to let everybody know that June's meeting is going to be a little bit different. Right now, we're going to advertise June's meeting for June 22nd. So it's going to be two weeks later than normal. So you can start spreading the word that that's when it looks like we will have it. We will obviously get it advertised plenty early since it's a change. And at least wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
And we're hopeful that that's in the, at the school, right, Trent?
Yeah, we're, we're hopeful that, that will be a live meeting in the boardroom. Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes.
All right. Now, do we have a motion for an adjournment?
Yes, Troy.
Dwayne Long and somebody give me the time. I don't have it in front of me.
Eight thirty-two.
Eight thirty-two. A second.
A second.
Jared Teeman. Mike Adams.
Yes.
Scott Carmichael.
Yes.
Ron Childress.
Yes.
Troy Field, yes. Dwayne Long.
Yes.
Jared Teeman.
Yes.
And Matt Roberts.
Yes.
Seven oh, we're adjourned.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.